Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 15, 2008. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We do have a quorum with six of seven members of council present. Next item on the agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from September 2, 2008?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Under communication, I am in receipt of one letter from Kim and Stuart Goldsberry of One North Hill Drive. It's a fairly lengthy letter, so I won't read it, but basically it is basically stating that they do not find the noise coming from the Endo Court Street objectionable. Are there other communications anyone would like to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
In reference to that, there will be a public hearing at the planning commission this Thursday, September 18, at 12 o'clock. This is to discuss, of course, the V2D outside ordinance about outside operations after a certain hour. It has to do, of course, with conditions of sound or noise. We're also going to have a public hearing for our public transit, September 30. That's a Tuesday at 7:00 if council changes here. This is for required public hearing. I believe the only thing I think is going to come on point for that is we might have some route changes to reflect some of the circulation of some of the buses. Couple other things I want to let you guys be aware of. There was one of those community cookouts this weekend, and there will be another one next Sunday, the 21st, on Kurt Street, starting from noon going to 4:00 p.m. I think Kent was there. I didn't see any of you guys there, but I was there for a short time. And again, this is that community, you know, school mix. And two more announcements. One is there's going to be the Buckeye Hills Hocking Valley Regional Development District. It's going to be hosting a town hall forum, a needs assessment, and this will be September 30 as well, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I'll be on two meetings at once at one point. Or come early and go late, whichever it is going to be. And that will be at the community center. Says refreshments will be served at 5:30, so I guess there'll be refreshments at that time. So I guess I'll come early.
Which one is having the refreshments?
Oh, the Buckeye Hills. Public hearing here is going to have refreshments. I was just made to be Danish or something. I don't know yet. And last, there's also going to be a hearing for the Ohio Consumer Council is going to have a forum concerning the electric rates, and that's October 8, 6:00 p.m. at the community center. And that has to deal with the increased rates. And other than that, I'm sure there's other communications I'm missing, but that's what I have on my plate right now.
Couple of quick questions. I know that my neighborhood has a boil order that goes on for... The email I got said three days.
No, it's just... It was a misprint from Thursday. There was an operational problem where the actual lab did not send out the notice and one of the operators did. And they said... And actually, it said in today's messenger till Thursday, but it's till Tuesday.
Okay.
Essentially, it's a case of the power going out and slamming some pipes. I think there were three breaks. Canterbury, Mulligan, and Canterbury, and someplace else. I forget where the third one was. And you probably saw the signs out there, the little handstand signs.
Those signs are helpful.
I hope so. That's why we put them out there.
But I do want everyone to know that very shortly, when we do premiere the new website, that it will be possible for everyone to sign up for emails of any boil orders that are going on on your street. And we expect that to be fairly soon. Yeah, so, yeah.
I think one of the weak points of that is how email server went down when the power outage occurred. So almost all email within the city was crashed. So I don't know if it has to... If the boilers have to go through that mechanism or not, but that's something to consider.
And, you know, in the same regard, I know yesterday, when I was on East State Street, and I called you, all of East State Street was in total gridlock due to the power going out and no traffic lights. And boy, it does not seem to take very long, even on a Sunday, to totally back it all the way up in both directions. Any idea how long that took to get straightened out, or?
No idea. I did call into the Service Safety Director, who in turn called the city, and they were on top of it, basically putting stop signs up. But again, it comes down to etiquette. If you're going through an intersection that doesn't have functioning light, everybody stops and gives each other some room to go.
Okay. Any other questions for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hecht.
No report.
Law Director.
Mr. President, I do have one issue regarding collective bargaining that I'd ask to discuss in executive session, but I don't have anything else for you right now.
Okay, very good. Onto ordinances for first... Yes, I'm sorry. Member Sands.
I think I have an amendment to make to our agenda.
To the agenda, okay.
I'd like to add ordinance 010108.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been amended.
Let's hear this.
Okay. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 9508, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Russell Chamberlain, owner, 540 West Union Street, for use of the city right-of-way for a sign. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, at this time, I move that we consider 09508 under suspension of council rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that the application was made early on in August during our recess and just to allow him to move ahead. He's already been waiting for a while for this.
Further discussion on suspension only. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, did somebody wish to speak?
Mayor.
Mayor Wile, let's hold off on the vote.
Okay. Part of the thing is that this probably would require variance for the size of the sign. I know the interpretation right now is that if it has an address on it, it's null and void and that. But if you look at the previous section of that code, its sign ordinance, any structural motifs, structural bottoms up to it, foundations are also included, and square footage of the sign. The part of the sign that has the tenant listing is actually 10 by 5, but the entire structure is much larger than that. And it will require variance from the zoning board appeals. And to me, it behooves us to have it go through zoning board appeals almost simultaneously, so there's some time. I know there's a hurry to do this, but just the same. It's your choice.
But to be clear, counsel, they can...
You can do it, yes.
...just deal with the right-of-ways a separate issue, but that is completely up to council discretion.
Member Phillips.
I spoke with Mr. Chamberlain yesterday about this question, and he's considering whether he is going to seek a variance or redesign the sign. At this point, he's just requesting the revocable license for use of the right-of-way for a sign, which will be replacing three existing non-conforming signs that are far less attractive than the one that's been designed.
Member Bain.
Mr. President, we could, in Section 1, say that we will grant revocable license for a sign as indicated, but just say in conformity with the existing code. And that would get us out of the business of seeming to grant a variance. I don't know how you feel about it. I wasn't here.
This was discussed in committee.
I know, but I remember.
And Member Phillips did tell everybody present that she, because of council's vacation, you know, was going to ask for it to be considered under suspension of the rules. I don't remember the discussion that Mayor Wile just gave us though.
There really wasn't. I wasn't aware of the size in conformity with the code at the time.
No.
So if we...
Yeah.
So what I was saying is if we pass it as it's written, we will be giving him an effect of variance, won't we?
I'm seeing the clerk shake her head no. I'm going to ask the law director.
Oh, nice. Just keep calling.
You do this to me every week, Nancy.
No, I can't help it.
That's what we pay you for. I would not think we are, but what do you think?
I would... I mean, I'm not familiar with any time when council has dealt with the size of a sign issue. It seemed to me to be more appropriate for the zoning board to deal with. But as to whether you can, I can't sit here and say that you absolutely can't do it that way.
Mr. President.
Yes, Member Phillips.
I'd like to move to amend the ordinance, if we need to, since we haven't even read it yet, to strike the words in Section 1 as indicated on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here in by reference, and instead put in accordance with the city's sign ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
But look, and that's great and good, but let's quickly withdraw our motion to consider under suspension of the rules.
Let's do that. I'll withdraw my motion.
And a second.
Withdraw my second.
Okay.
Okay. So now I'm going to move to amend the way I just said.
As you just said.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to amend ordinance number 9508 as stated. Is there further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 9508 has been read for the first time.
Mr. President, at this time, I move that we consider 09508 under suspension of council rules.
Second.
Motion and a second for suspension. Is there further discussion from council members only first? Member Wile, Mayor Wile.
Are you sure I can't vote on this?
No, I'm positive.
Okay, thank you.
You might be able to veto on it, but you can't vote on it.
Thank you for holding off the vote on that.
Okay. And were there anybody else? Yes.
Greg Broadhurst, 14 Granville Avenue. In the letter of the law, as, or I should say, Resolution 020, there comes that again, it has particular specifications by which people will approach council in order to receive a license for use of the right-of-way. And all of those specifications should not be bypassed. I think that it's pretty comprehensive.
They have it.
So I myself see this... I understand the... I don't understand the urgency of it, but I understand that, you know, the process began at a certain time. But as I see it, as a citizen and looking at the letter of the law, it's like, this should have been done beforehand. This should have been looked at before. We don't need the, you know... We've seen what happened for years of the horse, the cart pulling the horse, you know, and it didn't work very well, at least to my perspective. So I would say that maybe it just should go back to the specifications of the original city council resolution and be, you know, be lined up in the sense that meets those requirements. Simple.
Mr. Broadhurst, we are only discussing suspension at this point.
Okay. Okay? Is there further discussion on suspension only?
Member Phillips, was there anything else? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9508?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of 09508?
Second.
We discussed this in committee last week. We did, at that time, everyone had copies of all of the documents related to this, the application, all of the explanations about line of sight and all of that. And this one sign will replace three existing signs at the property. It will actually make visibility better, I believe, in one of the locations where there's an existing sign, as people are turning out onto Union Street. And the three existing signs are all larger than would be currently allowed by our sign ordinance. So this will in fact be, you know, if they receive a variance, be reducing an existing nonconformity.
Further discussion, Member Bain.
Mr. President, by their amendment, we have required that they follow the sign ordinance. So it's already... It's taken care of.
And to be clear from my earlier answer, if I wasn't clearly counsel, kind of attach whatever strings it wants to granting the use of right-of-way here. So it's absolutely proper to...
So the size will be in conformity?
That's correct.
Unless they go to the zoning board, in which case it won't be in conformity.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9508?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 9608, an ordinance closing a portion of Washington Street on Saturday, October 18, 2008, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the dedication of a historic marker commemorating the residents where Booker T. Washington and Olivia Davidson were married. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of 09608.
Second.
And this will be for the purpose so that the ordinance could be enacted before the October 18 closing.
We have a motion and a second for suspension on 9608 due to the timeline. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9608?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 09608.
Second.
Okay. This will be for a street closing that will happen on October 18. It's going to be from 10 to 2, and it will be closing a portion of Washington Street from Schaefer to Lancaster in order to dedicate the historic marker, noting where Booker T. Washington and Olivia Davidson were married.
Member Sands.
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment on the reason for suspension of the rules. Although this is in October, an ordinance would take 30 days to go into effect, and therefore it would not... Our next meeting would not be soon enough to do this.
Timey enough for that to happen.
Correct.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 9708, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 27, 2008, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for Trick or Treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Again, Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules for 09708.
Second.
And this would be to allow this ordinance to be enacted in time with that 30 days, just as the previous ordinance, so that we can have a street closing on October 27.
We have a motion and a second for suspension for ordinance 9708. Further discussion on suspension only? All in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Okay. Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 09708.
Second.
And this is for a street closing for the annual Trick or Treat that's hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. And it would close Court Street from Union to Carpenter, and that would be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. that the street would be closed. Now, they will ban parking on Court Street in the city of Athens from Union to Carpenter from 2:00 to 7:00, so that they have adequate time to clear all the parking, all parked cars from that street. And this has been for a... What has grown over the years, there are more and more young children that come up for this Trick or Treat to the Uptown area, and it's been very successful and very popular with parents and children alike, I think, so.
And it really is a safety issue, health and safety issue on this. Is there further discussion on ordinance 97? Member Bain.
Mr. President, if I look into the Wayback Machine when my children were young, in the olden days, we did the very same thing, but they would only rolling... They never took the parking off, and that would not... It would be much less inconvenient to the people who use the Uptown if they would just go between the cars. That's what happened, has happened before, so.
Oh, rather than having the cars removed?
Yes.
Is that the question?
I do know that the police chief was very concerned about leaving it that way with kids able to dart in and out, or at least that's what I remember.
Well, even he should remember that, since our children are roughly the same age we used to... I mean, in the... Before it was moved to the rec center, that's the way it used to be.
Mayor Wile.
I think the conversation at staff meeting was the fact that you may have the cars parked there, but there'd be people leaving during that time as well. So then you'd have, you'd have a closed-down street where you have cars pulling out of the parking spaces as well.
It's funny, I don't remember anybody... I mean, I think that the people parked and they knew that the street would be... They wouldn't be moving their cars for an hour. That was it. I mean, it's possible, because you're going to disrupt the Uptown area in a substantial way, having parking removed at 2.
I think that, yeah. I think the conversation is to bag it, so bag all the meters. Last conversation I had with the chief, with the idea that, of course, you have a two-hour window there, which means in two hours at 4:00, all the cars should be off. I am concerned about closing actual streets to thoroughfare. The last cruising we had had some traffic issues when we closed down at 5, right at Union and Court, because the flow is such that everybody wants to, you know, gets out of work and wants to zoom straight down and out. So we'll work on this.
I like the Uptown idea. Don't get me wrong.
Oh, I think it works well.
I think you can be flexible and work it out, if not this year, next year.
They were concerned about starting bagging at 2. I was in on the discussion down there, and cars pulling out during the time, so it does give them enough time from 2:00 to 4:00, so that no one would, you know, have a car there that wasn't. And then they are planning on towing after 4:00, if I remember correctly, so... But there is limitations put on Uptown businesses. We should not close streets without given due consideration to the points... Member Bain is maybe...
Well, we can fine tune it, right?
Yeah. What are we up to? Adopting? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 9808, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I subdivision regulations. Member Gosny is not here. Who would like to speak to this?
Mr. President, in the absence of Alahu, I'm asking that we just review what you went over last week. This is in response to Mr. Cooper's request that we do a small fine-tune, in this case and in the next case, ODNR, most recent edition available from Division of Soil and Water. And that kind of puts us in a more evolving law situation, where we're using the Rainwater and Land Development Manual, once again, and Sea as well. So it's, you can see, it's pretty much throughout where we are, we are giving a reference that is more useful than what we have currently.
Further discussion on ordinance 98? Ordinance 9908, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 27 Land Development. Member Bain, and will you again speak for Member Gosny?
Again, Mr. Gosny, who is traveling, is... Has requested that we change the citation in Title 27 Land Development ordinance. It's a bit out of date at this point, and the revision will make it more, again, growth and development document as opposed to what we have today. An outmoded one.
Is there other discussion? Ordinance 10008, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, at this time, I ask that we consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules. Why not? Did anybody say second?
Second.
This ordinance has three sections in it that move some money around. All three of those activities are going to be happening within a reasonably short amount of time, and the money needs to be appropriated for those activities.
That's the reason for the suspension. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 10008?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 10008.
Second.
Again, this ordinance has three actions within it. The first one is to appropriate $2,000 to the transportation fund. This $2,000 would allow our two new buses to be fitted with fare boxes and locking vaults for the money for the fares as they're deposited. We do expect, we do hope for delivery of our new buses by the end of this month. And so this would allow that to happen. It's also increasing the CDBG fund for the Granville Mary Project by $26,000. We'll be talking more about that in this, my next ordinance that we're going to add. But this is a project partially funded by CDBG money and partially funded by city money to improve these streets, Granville and Mary on the west side. Will involve some drainage work, resurfacing, adding a hydrant, and some other issues that are very necessary in that area. And finally, appropriating $2,000 to the water fund in the refund line. As the Service Safety Director said at our committee meeting, these are some refunds that were, that the city became aware of in August, but we didn't meet, so we have not made these refunds, and that's something we'd like to do in a timely fashion.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 10008? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Onto announcements and other business.
Mr. President, I amended.
Oh, we amended the...
I'm sorry, does anybody...
That's correct.
Does anybody have this?
I do.
You did. It was in my box, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was passed out. Onto ordinance 10008, an ordinance amending ordinance 0508, authorizing engineering and construction of the Granville Mary Drainage and Street Improvements, project number 231, and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
And we're going to ask that we also consider this under suspension of the rules. We'll explain that emergency.
Second.
This is a project that we hope to open and complete yet this year. The building timeframe is closing, and so we need to make this happen as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, the projected costs of this project have gone up. The bids that we received, and we have rebid parts of this, the bids are higher than they were projected. So this ordinance is authorizing the Service Safety Director to expend $156,000 on this project, as opposed to $100,000, the original estimate. And that increased money would come $100,600 from the CDBG fund, and $30,000 from the water fund, and $25,400 from the street rehab fund. So this is simply an authorization for additional funds to be expended for this project, as we've come to realize that the cost will rise.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
Suspended.
Oh, I thought we'd already suspended.
Was that just...
That was suspended.
Okay.
Was that just suspension?
The motion was for suspension, so...
And I...
And you explained it all, that's why I...
And I talked too much, and we got lost. I'm sorry.
Move adoption.
Move adoption.
I move that we adopt ordinance 10108. I'm sorry.
All the reasons that you have already stated. Now for adoption of 10108. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now the ordinance has been adopted and suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Onto announcements and other business. Who would like committee meetings next week? Member Phillips.
We need a community relations committee, just to finish up that discussion about responsible contractor language.
Very good. Member Bain.
I might like, I guess we're going to have a community relations committee and a utility committee.
Yes, we're expecting the committee to come, but I haven't had that confirmed at this point.
How about the other, the other person, the other visitor?
From the, from the United Appeal?
Mr. Walter? Mr. Walter?
Kim.
Oh, Kim Walter? Yeah, is he coming?
No, that's not until October.
October 13th? I thought it was supposed to be passed by October 13th.
No, there was no time. Can I stick you back on Ms. Bain's committee?
The Hoar Committee.
We did, I did receive a communication from Pam Harvey, who heads up our United Appeal in Athens. And United Appeal nationally is backing a 211 non-emergency phone banking system, and she would like to come and speak, as in her words, briefly about this system.
She's good. And I can't imagine if it possibly come up, if there were any questions, I guess I would have to recuse myself on the United Appeal Board. So if there's any questions, you have to look elsewhere.
On occasion, we all have to do that, it seems. Other comments or other announcements or other business? Any other committee meetings? Yes?
Transportation, we'll have a committee meeting, and that's to look at the contract with, between University Courtyard and Leyd Law Transit.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, I, all the things I thought were going to be on committee meeting next week, we passed tonight, but there could be more surprises for finance. So I'll save a little space for finance.
I would be disappointed otherwise.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. We ask that you state your name and address, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Stuart McDar, and I live at 71 Groener Street. I'm looking at a piece of property at 61 Fairview. It's a really unique piece of property. It's a two-room house. It's a cul-de-sac. And I had Charlie Miller up there the other day, and we talked about the possibilities of a curb cut for parking. And he said, well, the fire chief might have a problem with that because Scott Hunter had a fire up there, and it was all they could do to get a fire truck back there. It's adjacent to the public stairs. For my wife and I, we would like it so that our son could live there while he's going to college.
Stuart, you go to that cul-de-sac, is it like down to the right?
Uh huh.
Over, I know the place.
Right. Right. It's just adjacent to the public stairs, and they go down to Ford Street.
Sure.
Pappy Mitchell.
Yes.
It's that yellow stucco house. And Charlie told me that, you know, if I even wanted to approach anything about a parking spot, I'd have to apply for an irrevocable license because it would cross the right-of-way. There is ample property there to have a parking spot, and it's really not something that, it's a, it's a single person dwelling, is what it is.
I'll tell you, the place to really handle this will be in our next planning and development committee, which Member Phillips has. And I would ask you to get in touch with her ahead of time, and she might tell you what to bring to that. And we can have a much more wide-ranging discussion on what's needed and what's available and what rules we might need to talk about and what council action would be appropriate, but that would be.
Do you have a date for that?
I'm sorry?
A date?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, okay.
Here at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And I really appreciate you coming to see us, and we'll see you next Monday.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there someone else wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to go into executive session.
To include?
To include for the first part, and the mayor for the second part, only council.
Okay.
Second.
Count, takes.
Shall we, the auditor?
The auditor can be in too, for the first part.
For the first part.
She really wants to.
I can tell.
If I were Kathy, I'd want to go home.
And if we wanted to punish our clerk, we could make her stay for that too. But to go into executive session takes a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. Seeing that it is 8:02 on the clock, and that we have quite a few students here, when we come out of executive, they usually have questions that they would like to ask. When that clock says 8:20, I'm going to ask that everybody leave, because executive session, we have to do that alone. So when we come out of executive session, there will be no other action taken other than adjournment. The executive session, as it states on our agenda, I will see to it that we only discuss collective bargaining. That's one of the reasons that we are allowed to go into executive session. So with all of that, if you have questions to ask before council, you're welcome to come up and see them. And that will be the end of our broadcast.